And welcome to the July 30th, 2013. I'm gonna call this a special call, City Council meeting. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Bob Kamik, the Senior Pastor of Longview Christian Fellowship Church. Would you please stand?
Let us pray. Our Most Gracious Heavenly Father, we worship you today, Lord. We acknowledge, Lord, your sovereignty, your mercy, your truth, your grace, your love, Lord, and we pray today for this body of leaders of the city. We ask for true knowledge, for wisdom and understanding, so that they would be able to make good decisions for the city. And, Lord, we pray for the city of Longview. We pray for your prosperity. We pray for your will and your ways to be done in us and through us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Please join me in the pledge to our nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bob, thank you very much for being here. Citizen comment. Um, let's see. First call we have is Julie Ricker. Fountain Blue Estates. That sure is some pretty brochures you left up here.
Thank you, thank you.
Man.
I appreciate you.
Y'all got any cut deals tonight? We can talk about it.
I'm gonna offer you one when I'm through.
I got, I might be, I might be wanting one thirty-two.
I'll, I'll, I tell you what, I've already reserved my room, so I'll be sure you get the best.
Yeah.
I would like to introduce myself. I'm Julie Rucker. I'm the Marketing Director for Fountain View Estates. We are a new Superior Assisted Living and Memory Care that's opening up here in Longview. And I'd like to thank you first for allowing me to be here, and also thank the city for the issuance of our bond. I know there was a lot of work in that, and for, that helped us begin our construction, and we really, really appreciate that. Fountain View Estates is a beautifully designed community. We're providing assisted living, and, please excuse me, I don't script well, but I'm trying to stay in my time limit. We're providing assisted living and memory care for those with the highest of standards. We are targeted to open September of two, of 2013, and our mission is to provide seniors with superior lifestyle that includes expertise care and affordable, an affordable option that does not compromise quality. We have fifty-two apartments in our assisted living and twenty-two private apartments in our memory care. Our assisted living will offer a variety of floor plans, including four apartments that are two bedrooms, uh, that overlook the lake. We have a theater that seats sixty, as well as private dining. And here's just some points that I feel make us superior. Number one, the experience and expertise of our management team. We've all been involved in dementia, memory care, and senior health for a number of years. Our level of care, we are the only assisted living in the state of Texas that's offering twenty-four-hour nursing on-site. If you hear there's twenty-four-hour nursing, usually that is a phone number that they can use. Our lifestyle, which will include our activities and programs, transportation at no extra cost, waterfront community overlooking a beautiful landscape lake with walkways, our superior apartment homes, uh, in the cost, all utilities are covered, weekly laundry services and housekeeping. We are pet-friendly, which means that we truly understand how important those pets are to people, especially in a transition time of life, so we welcome those pets in our facility. In fact, I've already told them, you'll probably see my little Australian shepherd around the community. We do participate in Veterans Aid and Assistance Program. We are certified in secure memory care for individuals that are experiencing Alzheimer's or dementia's. Our entire staff will be dementia-certified, which is the Dementia Care Professionals of America. That is a division of Ameri, of Alzheimer's Foundation of America. Even our kitchen staff will be certified. We have superior dining, and this is really, we feel, last but not least, three delicious meals, snacks all day, and all our meals are served in our beautiful waterfront dining hall by our gracious staff, restaurant-style. So we will be waiting on these people. Fountain View Estates, we truly believe that dignity and respect are first and foremost, especially during this time of life and transition. We truly believe that not only are we caring for our residents, but we're treating the whole family. So their extended family is also part of our family. We believe that by bringing our superior community to Longview, we will be offering over forty employment positions to individuals. We are also going to be partnering with all local providers to provide care and assistance to all our residents. We truly believe, uh, that what we have to offer here is superior to any other facility here in Longview. I would like to say now in closing, I want to thank you for allowing Fountain View Estates to offer service to seniors of Longview. Like I said, that is far superior and much needed in this community. And my reason to be here today and present this to you is it is, it is my hope that you will partner with us to help get the word out to the Longview community and our seniors that we truly are the best senior destination in East Texas. So I really appreciate this. I, I can't tell you my convictions and what we're bringing to the community. I moved my mother in assisted living six years ago. I've walked this path, and I know what we're offering. I wish we had had this for her. So I, we're excited about it. I would like to offer my administrators here, and I told her I was gonna offer this. If anyone will come to me and say they heard about Fountain View Estates and this meeting, we're going to offer special rates, our founders' rates that we offered in the beginning. So, uh, come, please come and tour anytime, and you'll be hearing more from us with our open house. So, thank you.
Does that include the doggy?
Yes. Okay.
Dog gets a break too?
Oh, absolutely.
Man.
Absolutely.
See, Sidney, we got just the place for you.
Absolutely. Yes, yes. Bring it on, bring it on.
Hey, listen, thank y'all, and, uh, we want to thank all of the assisted living, uh, facilities that have, are coming to Longview and fairness to everybody.
Yes, very exciting.
But the reality is, is we went through a process to make Longview a retirement community.
Yes.
And we're starting to see the fruits of that, as witnessed by your, your new facility here in town. So thank you for being here tonight.
Yes, thank you.
Take care. Yes, sir. Uh, we need to get the mic fixed, huh? Sidney, they were trying to tell, they were trying to tell you something, Sidney. Okay. And welcome home, Sidney. Hope the lobster were good.
They're very good.
All right. All right, we're gonna go to consent agenda. Council have any item on the consent agenda they'd like to hold for separate consideration? Yes, sir?
Item E has to do with the Governor's Community Achievement Award in the amount of $270,000, and I wonder if Ms. Hill could just give us a explanation for the benefit of the audience, a large amount of money that we were very wonderful to receive, and maybe she could give us a little explanation of what we're gonna do with the money?
Okay.
Or who has the money?
Okay. Uh, we're very pleased and proud that Keep Longview Beautiful, through their competitive process with Keep Texas Beautiful, brought this award home to Longview. It's $270,000, and, uh, you're being asked tonight to give permission for the award project to be placed on the city-owned land on the corner of Highway 31 and Spur 63. Tech dot does control the funds, and they do control the scope of the project, uh, but if you give permission, at that point, we would move forward. The current rough idea is to envision a, a park-like setting. That's about all I can tell you right now, because we, until we have permission, there's no sense in moving forward with design.
Thank you. Let me, um, let me back up a second in, in, uh, talking about the facility and your mic. I did have another speaker card, um, and, and I'm gonna, gonna ask a question. I have Jesse Bradley wanted to talk about the, the trash service, the once-a-week trash service. Jesse, where are you?
Kansas.
Where, hey, let me ask you a question. Can I come, we're gonna talk about that item in a bit, and could I get you to come at that point in time, since we've already initiated the consent agenda? Is that okay?
No.
I'mma, I'mma call you back up here in just a couple minutes. Thank you, Jesse. Okay. Is any other item on consent agenda the council would like to consider separately? If not, may I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Good to approve.
I have a motion, a second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Budget items, presentation of the proposed fiscal year 2013-2014 budget for the city of Longview, Mr. Willard. While Mr. Willard is getting set up, council, I'm gonna ask that, uh, tonight, this is the presentation, um, you have a book that's been given to you. The, the, the presentation is to, we're gonna receive the presentation. If you have any questions at all, please make a list of what your questions are, and I'd recommend that you take your book home tonight, you, you look at and see if you have the answers you need. If not, to contact Mr. Willard, and then at the next meeting, we'll bring all those items. Tonight is strictly the presentation. Mr. Willard?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's good to see everyone tonight. Appreciate you being here. It's my pleasure tonight to present for your consideration a proposed budget for the city of Longview for the twenty, FY 2013-2014 budget year. The document that you have before you is the culmination of a process that began in May, and will end tonight, end when the city council adopts the final version of this budget at the end of August. As we go forward from here tonight, there will be plenty of opportunities for discussion and public input. The city staff will be more than glad to answer any questions you might have, as well as providing you with any other information necessary to help you make an informed decision. Over the course of the last several years, our community has faced some challenging economic times, with some businesses still struggling to earn a profit. Even so, Longview's economy is well diversified and stable. Once again, our city staff has done an excellent job of managing their budgets, and we expect to end this budget year in September with expenditures under our revenues, resulting in another budget surplus. Even with Longview's economic stability, there is still the need to budget as conservatively as possible, and although we have seen increases in the cost of providing services, we understand that as any business or family budget, we at the city must also balance our expenses with the available income. That is the budget that we are presenting to you tonight. In preparing this budget proposal for you, we have kept the following goals in mind. First, to budget conservatively, to remain fiscally responsible, to reduce costs throughout the budget when possible, and to continue to provide quality services to the citizens, especially in the core areas of public safety, public works, and public works while not raising taxes. I want to thank the directors, department heads, and all their staff for the work they've done during this budget preparation. Also, I want to recognize my budget team, and we've worked pretty much on a daily basis since May, really, and that consists of our Finance Director Angela Cohen, Assistant City Manager Chuck Ewing, Assistant to the City Manager Mary Ann Miller, and then this year, the newest member of the City Manager's Budget Team was our Public Information Officer Sean Hara. So I want to publicly thank especially my team members, uh, as we go forward there. To begin with, on the slide presentation, I want to just give you some budget assumptions that we, uh, when we start to build our budget, that we keep in mind. First of all, uh, we had a slight decrease in our appraised property values, and as you all know, uh, a good portion of our general fund revenue comes from property taxes, and of course, those are assessed based on the value and the rate assessed to, or levied against that, and we've seen a slight decrease in the appraised property values. I'll show you in just a few moments, but, uh, we are down about three tenths of a percent, which is very, very slight. We were above market value from Gregg County, but a portion of our property values comes from Harrison County, and we were down quite a bit in Harrison County values, but the overall result was just a very slight, very modest decrease in the value. Once again, we are not proposing any property tax rate increase. Our projected sales tax collections, we're not building in any increase in our projections. We're, we've based this budget on our year-end estimate for 2013 that we think we're gonna get, uh, and we're not gonna increase that at all, but we think we'll collect exactly the same amount as we did this past year. For the first time in three or four years, you'll be happy to, to see that we're not gonna propose any water or sewer rate increase. Council, over the last three or four years, has really stepped up to the plate, and we've done what we've needed to do, and I think you'll really be pleased when you see the numbers that that's resulted in, in the Water and Sewer Fund, and how we're gonna go forward in the future. And then, proposed rate increase for sanitation services, and I have a question mark there, and we'll get into that in just a little bit, but of course, that's predicated on, uh, the proposal we're gonna bring forward tonight regarding our sanitation services as well. And then finally, to maintain a fiscally sound fund balance. Some budget highlights that I want you to be aware of. First of all, continued progress on the 2011 street bond project. In 2011, uh, the citizens of Longview passed a $52 million street bond issue, and we've been working very diligently on getting those proj, projects underway, and in fact, we're probably about halfway through the, the project, and we'll be issuing another $23.3 million in street bonds in December of 2013. So those projects are well underway, and I think it would probably be, uh, you know, in the next month or two, maybe Mr. Bonds can come up and give us a, a bird's-eye view of where exactly we are in those projects, but they're, they're moving along really well. Also built in the budget, one of the highlights is a market-based compensation plan. In 2008, the city council approved that our compensation be based on market values, and we went out at that time and hired a consulting firm that, that did a real comprehensive study, and, uh, we instituted the first portion of that, and then afterwards, the economy had some tough times, we weren't able to budget, uh, the market-based compensation. This year, we would like to do that, and what that does is move our employees to the market midpoint, and this is based on a, the consultant survey of nineteen other cities in Texas, and also some other private sector entities as well. And this also, this compensation plan includes expanded steps for police and fire. You remember that their compensation, uh, the way they're compensated is a little bit different from your general government employees. They have a step program in their, uh, in their pay plan. We, uh, needed to really expand the, the police by two steps in there, because we're having some issues. Our entry level is very good, but officers that are there eight to ten years and beyond max out, and there's no step of progression, and so, uh, we felt like that we needed to get that included in there as well, and the same for fire department. Now, one thing, this is not an across-the-board pay increase. Last year, council approved a three percent across-the-board pay increase that went into effect in April, so not everybody with the city, an employee will get, will see a pay increase out of this market-based plan, but it does move everyone who is behind, it moves them to market. Many employees are already at the market and will not see an overall increase. And then you'll see a continued focus on street maintenance. We've budgeted one, a little over one and a half million dollars to continue the good work that Mr. Bonds and his staff is doing on our street maintenance, to make sure that that infrastructure is where we need it to be for the long term. The other issue that is gonna be very big this year is our comprehensive plan. You'll have another agenda item on the agenda tonight to get that kicked off, and of course, you have approved a contract with Freeze &amp; Nichols as the consultant that will lead us forward. This will be about an eighteen-month process that we're just beginning, and it'll, the cost will be $225,000, which will be spread over multiple budget cycles, but, uh, that'll be getting started here this year, and it will be a, a blueprint for the city of Longview for the next twenty years, a very important undertaking for the city and, and city council and mayor. Then we're also built in this budget an additional frontline ambulance and crew for $317,000, which will purchase the ambulance and then fund the additional, uh, crew for that. Let me just show you the need that we have in our fire department. This, this graph's a little bit busy, but we operate our ambulance service with four frontline ambulances that are on the front line, ready for call. We also back that up with three additional reserve ambulances. Now, we've been doing that since 1995, and the bar gra, or the, the graph on the left, the first one is the annual emergency responses, and you'll see that those have, have more than doubled since 1995. They've gone from 6,418 to projected in 2013 of 16,256. The bar on the right side indicates the annual EMS transports, what we actually, when we pick up someone and transport them to the hospital, and you can see that those have nearly tripled since that, that time. And what we're doing is we're taking firefighters off of the, the fire trucks and having to switch over to run the ambulances, and we're, we're really maxed out on our ambulances, and we, we need to, to add that additional fifth ambulance to our frontline service. And then on the right, you see historically the line graph, and then of course, the, uh, what we think's gonna happen in the future, uh, and we've seen this grown exponentially, and we don't see really any, any downturn in the number of calls and responses that we have. So we felt like that this was an important thing to maintain our service that we're providing to the citizens, and one of the core services that we have as a city. Property tax values, we talked a little bit earlier about the fact that we're down a little bit. This is a historical look at our property tax values from 2008, and you'll see that we had a period of pretty nice little growth there, and then it's just really for the last four or five years, been essentially flat, our property values have. The value in 2013 was $5,516,496, and 2014, our certified values have come in at $5,499, 077,857, so, uh, down a little bit, but just really not very much, just pretty well flat. The revenue that is generated with the current property tax rate, we're expecting in 2014, $26,780,770 generated from our property taxes. Sales tax revenue, uh, kind of the same story. Of course, 2010, everyone remembers what happened there and, and the amount of money that was lost to sales tax revenue because of the downturn in the economy. We've recovered from that, but really, uh, since 2011, the little recovery, it's just been, been really flat. There's just no growth or expected growth, uh, in our sales tax revenue, so we are projecting, and we feel like that's conservative, uh, projection, the same amount of money for next This is a chart that shows our property tax rates since 2004, and you see the total bar is our total overall tax rate, uh, and then in 2004, it was 4834, and down below, the blue portion of the bar represents the amount of tax rate we use for maintenance and operations, and the red portion, uh, shows you what we, uh, pay for debt service portion of that rate. And, uh, so for the last three years, we saw the uptick, uh, when was that, in 2011, I guess, when we did the street bond issue? That uptick in the tax rate is due to the voter-approved street bond issue, and so this year, we're, uh, see no change in the overall tax rate. On the general fund, this is a pie chart that shows, uh, our total revenue and sources. General fund is $61,227,123, and the, the key thing here is to see that 66% of our revenue is generated from property taxes and sales taxes. On the expenditure side, another, uh, pie chart shows the same dollar amount in the way of expenditures for the general fund, and, uh, the interesting thing here, 62% of our services revolve around public safety, so, uh, as we all know, public safety, streets, parks, uh, is really the core services that we provide our citizens. So here's our general fund summary, uh, and I'm, I'm really very proud of this, of this, these numbers. Our beginning fund balance that we're projecting at the end of September, when we finish this, this budget year, we're projecting to be $15,578,308. We're projecting revenues next year of $61,227,123, and expenses of the same amount, $61,227,123, leaving at the end of this next budget year, uh, a balance, fund balance of $15,578,308, which is 25.44%, um, which is very healthy fund balance, uh, for the general fund. Now, we reserve out of that certain things that we're reserving, uh, for financial purposes. We've reserved OPEB. Now, that's the Other Post-Employment Benefits that we, uh, have talked about, that we need to, to keep out and reserve to meet obligations in the future. The George Ritchie Road Construction, which council approved to participate in a couple of years ago, we've reserved out $1,650 for that, and then the reserve for the firefighter pension obligations, liabilities in the future, we've reserved $1,342,386. So with those reservations out of the budget and out of the, uh, the fund balance, we're gonna project an ending balance of $11,085,922 at the end of next year, after this budget is, is approved and, and done. So, uh, council policy is to have a fund balance of 10% requirement for the general fund, and you see that with this fund balance, we're gonna end the year with nearly $5 million over the 10% requirement of the fund balance. One-time expenditures, we, uh, most years come to the council and ask you to consider what we term as one-time expenditures. Normally, these are larger expenditures that we don't have in the operations budget that we ask you to consider to spend out of the fund balance for these. The first one we're gonna look at is a new ladder truck, uh, be replacing Ladder Truck Five. The, uh, the last ladder truck we bought was, and put in line was in 2000, and, uh, so we have a replacement schedule for these large pieces of equipment. Last year, we didn't have to purchase anything in that cycle. The year before that, it was a fire engine. Next year, we're on schedule to, to have some more purchases, so we'd like to, to get some of these things, uh, taken care of this year, and the ladder truck is one of The other one-time expenditure that we want to talk to you about is a self-contained breathing apparatus replacement schedule. Now, um, the breathing apparatus is the whole piece of gear that you can see, if I can hone in here. It's the face mask, the breathing apparatus, the regulator, the air tanks, all of the equipment that our firefighters use and need when they go into a situation, and it's called a self-contained breathing apparatus. We need to start replacing all of that equipment over the next four, uh, three years, and to replace all of that equipment for all our department, if we did it today, would cost $660,000 to replace all of that equipment. We would like to go ahead and start that this year and use $180,000 to begin this replacement, and, uh, it would go to, to replace some of these regulators and the face piece on some of our equipment. Now, we want to use $100,000 to do that, and then we're applying for a grant that we think we have a, a real nice shot of, of getting a grant to pay for, for the, a lot of the rest of this, but, uh, we're gonna need $80,000 to go toward that. So the first year in this replacement program, uh, we're asking the council, let us spend $180,000, uh, out of the fund balance in order to, to get started on that.
How many of these do we have?
Let me finish that, and we'll come back, please. The other one-time expenditure that we'd like to do is a, a project at the Lear Park Jackman Splash Pad. If you have taken your grandchildren, in my case, out to the splash pad, or your children, you'll know that we are covered up in people, which is a great thing, and it's been a very popular, uh, attraction that, that we've offered out at Lear Park. And what we'd like to do is to spend $260,000 out of fund And what we'd like to do is to spend $260,000 out of fund balance at Lear Park to build a concession stand facility, as well as another octagonal pavilion, which would be a larger one, a 52-foot pavilion for that facility. This shows you the blue, this is an overview of that facility out there. The yellow would be where the concession stand would be built. And of course, the pavilion is in the blue. And we already have one pavilion, which is located right here. Is that correct, Ms. Hill? That's already out there. So this would add the concession stand and then a larger pavilion. So the one-time expenditures that we'd ask your consideration on are the fire department, the ladder truck, the self-contained breathing apparatus program, the splash pad at Lear Park, and all that totals up to $1,390,000. Uh-oh. I need to back that up, please. Thank you. So this would be, if you approve in this budget process to do that, this is the way you would end up next year, the summary. Of course, you begin the year with those revenues and expenditures and everything reserved out of the fund balance. You'd end with 18.11%. And the less the one-times, that would still give us over a 15% fund balance. We'd end up the year with a little over $9.5 million, which would give you $3.5 million over the fund balance at the end of next year, should you allow us to purchase those Water, wastewater. This is going to be a nice thing, and I think you'll be proud of this. This current year, we're going to end in September, of course, 2013. And our projections are to end with $33,293,949 of revenue. Our expenses are right under $30 million. And we are going to move into our CIP reserve, $5,300,000 into CIP for future projects, which will still leave us a fund balance at the end of this year at 23%, $6,802,000. Just as a reminder, our fund balance policy for the water and sewer fund is a 15% fund balance policy as opposed to 10% in the general fund. This slide projects 2013, 2014, and again, no requested increase. We believe our revenue will be $33,582,314, expenses of $30,51,161. And at the end of next year, we feel like we can put another $4 million over into the CIP reserve fund and still have a fund balance of over 20% at the end of next year. And the exciting thing is to look at this CIP reserve. After next year, or this time next year, we'll have over $12.5 million in our reserve fund for CIP project. And of course, the purpose of this, four years ago, was try to move where we could get away from issuing so much debt in the water and sewer fund and be able to cash fund some projects. And so I'm sure Mr. Bonds can bring forward some really nice projects, either on water and sewer line extensions or some big projects that we, would be really fun to be able to do and to cash fund that when council's ready to do that. So I think that's, I appreciate the council stepping up when we did, when you did a couple of years ago. And remember, the debt coverage ratio, won't take very long on this, but our debt coverage is a function of our bonded indebtedness and requirements that we have to keep. The coverage ratio for this coming year will be at 1.58. The minimum requirement, according to our bond covenants, is 1.25. So we're in really nice shape there. Okay, budget summary. All of our total funds you see here, and it totals up to what we'll be asking you to Now, council, I'd like to take just a few minutes to go through the sanitation proposal. We had, you remember, in the budget, we contemplated a dollar a month rate increase, should we continue like we're going forward with the current levels of service and the type of service that we've been providing. So I wanted to just transition into this real quickly. Then after we get through with this, we can open it up for questions and be happy to answer any of those things for you. But in, two years ago, in November of 2011, recycling really became a focus here in the city of Longview. And of course, recycling has been around for a long time. Most of the time, however, it's not been cost-effective to look at the issue of recycling. And it's just been too expensive. Either there was not a market there or the cost of transportation, in our case, would have had to take it to Shreveport or other places. And it was just not cost-effective to recycle. In 2011, that changed because there was a private company that came in and opened up, built a materials recovery facility. And you'll sometimes hear that as called a MRF. And that's where, a place that was right out of Kilgore, where we could take our recyclable materials, drop those off and be paid for them. And then all of a sudden, it became worthwhile to emphasize recycling. And so we've done that. And the problem is, we've done a really good job, or Dwayne Archer and David Simmons and them have done a really good job promoting recycling up to this point. And so as we've done that, and people have seen recycling, the council asked us about a year ago to look at the issue of recycling. Could we enhance that? Could we go forward and take it to the next level? And so this program that we're presenting tonight, or just a summary of it, really is the culmination of that request from the council to the staff to bring a program forward as, and to let you look at it if we want to take recycling to the next level. And while I'm here, I want to thank Dwayne Archer and David Simmons for their work in this program. They have worked, you can't imagine the hours that Dwayne and David have put into this. And it's very well thought out. And anyway, I just want to give them a shout-out for the good job that they've done to bring this forward to you. First of all, let's talk about our existing system. And we have a wonderful solid waste system. I don't think anybody would argue with that point at all because any survey the city does, and I know phone calls you all get, really praise our department for the service they provide overall and the quality of service that we've been able to do. And I can assure you that if we make these changes, that won't change. We will provide great customer service, whatever method we do to pick our garbage up. But currently, our residential service provides twice-a-week garbage collection, once-a-week recycling collection. Once a week, we will pick up bulky items. When citizens call in, we'll pick it up. We also have a compost site that we allow our citizens to come and to use that at no cost. Our current residential rate is $14.95 a month plus a fuel fee. Also, as part of the efforts that we've done to recycling to this point, we are providing our citizens for a dollar a month, a 95-gallon cart, to help them fill up more recycling and to get that number up. But to this point, we don't provide garbage carts. We use the bag system where the citizens put bags out on the curb and we pick those up. Now, if we maintain that, we are asking that for a dollar a month rate increase from $14.95 to $15.95 in this next budget year. And I'll tell you that when you look at the future, it's going to become more and more costly for us to continue to do what we're doing. And we'll look at some things in a minute. But it really revolves around two issues. Number one, the once-a-week recycling collection. We have really maxed out our capabilities to pick up any more recyclables on Wednesday without changing the program to add additional trucks and routes and days to do that. So we've really maxed out what we can do recycling. And the second thing is the twice-a-week garbage collection. And we'll talk more about that. But we pick up, on the second day, we pick up 50% less trash on the second day of the pickup than we do the first. And you'll see in a minute, when you look at the same amount of equipment that we have to use. So for the service we're providing, we are terribly inefficient on picking up that second day a week. Currently, this shows you what we do to provide this service currently. We have 12 rear loaders, 12 drivers, and 24 ground crew. We have two crew members on the back of each truck that provide the service that we currently do today. And this doesn't include our bulky item pickup. So this is the number of trucks and the amount of people it takes for us to do this service. We also, we provided a compost site as far as recycling's concerned. We added a recycling coordinator, David Simmons. We have increased our marketing efforts. We've increased education and awareness. And we have increased the recycling participation, so much so, as I said earlier, that we have maxed out really our capabilities of going anymore. So when you really look at this thing, recycling has really become the key to the future. And I don't think anybody can argue logically that increased recycling equals these things that we've talked about. It equals reduced landfill costs. Anytime we can keep recyclables out of the landfill and take them to this MRF, we're saving a lot of money. And I'll show you that in just a moment. We also extend the life of the landfill. You know, these landfills only have a certain amount of life. And although it's way out there, you know, what we're talking about is the future and good planning for the future. So recycling increased will extend the life of the landfill. It'll also increase revenue for the city. We're getting paid now by the ton for our recyclables, but we feel like there's a lot left out there to be had as well. And it will stabilize customer rates. The advantage of increased recycling, the city receives a rebate currently of $10 a ton for the recyclables that we delivered to the river's material recovery facility. And on the trash, the city pays $22.69 per ton delivered to the landfill. So when you look at recycling versus trash, for every ton that we can divert out of the landfill, we're going to say, the city realizes $32.69 a ton by recycling versus putting it in the landfill. Here's the proposed system in a nutshell. In order to increase our recycling, the city, free of charge, will provide each customer with a 95-gallon recycling cart and a 95-gallon trash cart if the customer desires. Now, both carts will be picked up on the same day. So we will be picking up both recyclables and trash one time per week, each week. One for recyclables, one for trash. And we propose to do it with new equipment. We'll have to change out our trucks, the way we are providing that. We're going to go, should you approve this, to a Heil multi-pack. It provides for rear load and automated side-load systems. And this is a real plus to this new proposal. Of course, the sidearm that you see here will handle the, both the 95-gallon carts, trash and recyclables. But we will still have the capability to provide the same service and pick up bags as well. So if a person is disabled or elderly or just can't physically handle the carts, we can provide the same service we're doing right now with bags on the curb because we'll have that capability with this new equipment to do both. And I think that's a real plus in your consideration. And look at the savings that we will have here by going to this pickup. We'll require eight multi-pack units, eight drivers, eight ground crew, which does not include the bulky pickup. That'll still be a separate service. But you can see, we'll have a driver and one person, instead of two, on the back of the truck. And that person will be there to pick up bags on the curb. Should somebody just refuse, just say, "I'm just not going to use the carts," then we'll be able to provide the service like we have been. Or elderly person or whatever, we can still provide that service. Now, one question I want to address, you say, "Well, that's less people. Is anybody going to lose their job?" And we have such a high turnover rate in the sanitation among the drivers that we don't feel like that we'll have to lay anybody off as a result of this, that we can take care of that through natural attrition. So we would not see any layoffs occurring to our staff by going this direction. The proposed system would include once-a-week garbage pickup, one-time-a-week recycling collection, once-a-week bulky item collection, and the use of a compost site at no additional cost. The proposed residential rate would be the same as the current year, $14.95 a month plus the fuel fee. And they would be provided with two carts at no cost as part of the program. And no rate increases would be required. Now, this program, council has seen this program individually. We've gone over those things. We have worked very hard to get this out into the public domain, to let people comment and look on it and think about it. And this is just a synopsis of what we've tried to do up to this point. We've had three public informational meetings here at City Hall. We've had online question-and-answer sessions on the city's Facebook page. We've proposed the information on our website, thelongviewtexas.gov. We have a proposal video that's airing on City View and the municipal television. We've had a proposal announcement in our water bill messages that we have sent out. We've also had a description in our city news publication, and then coverage also by our local media. Now, we wanted, as a result of these public discussions, I wanted to try to give you four or five top questions that we've had, that people have posed to us through this public process. And one of the top ones is, what if I don't want to use the carts provided by the city? So I don't, I want to do bags, I don't want to use the carts. The beauty of this proposal is that if a customer chooses not to use the carts or is physically unable to manage, or not physically able to manage the carts, they will not be required to use them. We will have the ability, with the way we're set up, to service those who either can't or don't desire to do that. Number two, what will happen if people don't put their carts away after collection? We've had questions, and that's a legitimate concern, that what if, they're just going to be sitting out there on the curb for three days between, before somebody puts them up. And what we would propose to do, and what other cities do as well, is we would propose a cart return service for an additional fee. This service would automatically be provided to customers if it continues to leave the carts at curbside. Practically what this would do, it'd be driven by complaint. People are going to call in and complain, "Hey, you know, John Smith over here won't put his carts up." So we'll respond, we'll ask Mr. Smith, "Please put your cart back up in a timely fashion." We'll do that. And eventually, if Mr. Smith doesn't do it, then we would assess a fee for us to pay to go up and put the carts back up. And I think most people will comply with that and they want their neighborhoods to be in order as well. So that would be our answer to that question. Other question, why is the city reducing my service from twice-a-week to once-a-week garbage collection? And our response to that is, we really don't see that the proposed program is a reduction in service. Instead, we view the proposal as an enhancement resulting in lower costs, increased productivity, and emphasize recycling. We are going to continue to pick up all the trash that's out there, whether it be trash, garbage, recyclables, bulky items, whatever that is. Dwayne and his crew, we're going to get all that picked up. So we're not going to reduce what we do, we're going to pick it up. And we see it as really an enhancement to the long-term viability of our program. Will going to once-a-week pickup cause my garbage to smell? We've had a lot of questions about that. We've had a lot of questions about that, and that's, all these are legitimate questions and concerns that people have, that we wanna try to answer. The carts are designed, the heavy-gauge plastic that they are, they're designed for storage of garbage. And if the garbage is properly bagged and stored in the cart, really, a customer should notice very little odor. When will I receive my recycling and garbage carts? If the program's approved by the city council, it'll take a while for us to implement this and to get carts out to twenty-seven thousand different, or however many customers that we have. So, we're, should council approve this with a new budget year, we'll get to work in May or June of 2014, we'll have, hopefully have all the carts out. And it'll take us a while to get the equipment. So, it'll take a year and a half, kind of, to really get the thing going, once you give us the go-ahead to get started on it. Okay, that concludes the presentation. Just a couple of housecleaning items. Of course, this is our budget calendar, and I won't go over much of that at all, except to say that we will have a meeting August the eighth. And at that point, we'll have more budget discussion, talk about some fee changes, things like that, preliminary vote on the tax rate possibly. Some other public hearings, these are dates. The important date here, the most important, will be the October, or the August 29th, when we'll ask you to adopt the new budget for the year. And then Thursday, September 12th, we'll adopt the tax rate, and that will finish us up for this year. So, with that, I appreciate your indulgence on that, and we will ask you to try to answer any questions you might have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Willard. Okay. Thank you very much. I think we're gonna, we're good. Everybody's gonna look over the, this information, and we're gonna start preparing our questions. And the reason we're having so many meetings is to come back and let's bring those forward. We'll give staff time to get your questions, get information on your questions, and then to bring those back, so the entire council can understand what particular issues might be. So, we'll proceed in that manner, if that's okay. Now, let me understand, so we had a section, good, good job, Ms. Willard. We had a second item on here, which was to discuss the new simplified collection program. I think we just did that.
We did that, yes, sir.
I think you stole his thunder.
No, he's right.
Dwayne, come on.
Any questions?
I'm just here to answer any questions that council might have.
That, that's, we added it as a separate item, in case you had any questions. Oh, okay. Well, I do have a speaker card that I wanna go ahead and give Mr. Bradley, his opportunity, since I missed him early. Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Come on forward, if you don't mind, sir. Thanks for your patience.
Say, "Good evening, y'all."
Good evening.
Yeah. I guess come before, look like all my questions been answered. I was sitting at the House reading about how this new system was gonna work and all that. He just by yes all of my questions that I asked, that we're gonna ask. I really were concerned about the young men, they really, really wet, they really be running out there trying to get their garbage loaded and all that stuff. And my heart really went out to them. But you said there would be no layoff or no what? I really enjoyed that, because I'm retired now, and my heart go out to those that's really trying to do what's right, going out working every day. And those big old trucks you were talking about, I only got one question about them. They really cost a lot of dollars, about two-hundred-seventy thousand dollars apiece? Did I get that right?
Yes, sir.
All right, about, about eight of them, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Five for garbage and three for recycle, right?
Yes, sir.
All right.
He got every bit of it.
And you think, all right, and you think the city can pay for all that, but not going up on the water, the water and all that, I mean, with the
Sanitation.
Costs not going up?
Right.
Very, very high?
Yes, sir. We think That's what the numbers indicate, Mr. Bradley. And of course, we're gonna have some more discussion on that.
All right.
You know, we have to deal with the existing trucks.
Yes.
And how we retire the debt on the existing trucks.
Yes.
In order to purchase new trucks. I think we're also looking at the new natural gas-fired equipment.
Yes.
That'll further, you know, extend the life of the vehicles and use some of the natural resources we have, we have here as well. So, there's, there's more to discuss and more, more rocks to uncover here. But I think the key is, what, what we wanted to do was to get this information out to the public via the different instruments Mr. Willard referred to, town hall meetings, et cetera. Because this is a real sensitive subject to a lot of people.
Yes.
Sanitation is a, a big issue.
Yes.
And we don't wanna surprise attack anybody, or force-feed anybody, you know, something anybody doesn't want. But what we've been trying to do is collect the data and the information and the questions, so we can bring that here to the public, and let's talk about it. So, that's what we intend to continue to do.
Yes, like I said, yes, but all my questions been answered. I tried to get it pretty good on computer, but I'm not very good on computer. I sent something out, and they didn't get answered back. I guess I must send it wrong.
You can come right, you can come right up here to that front office and then give you all the data you want. I like that hard copy, too.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to commend again, Dwayne and David, our sanitation department, under, of course, Mr. Bonds, reduce, reuse, recycle. That is huge. And I am just so delighted that we're even at a point where we're considering moving forward with this. And, and I, I wanted to make sure that I communicate that, 'cause I've talked to several of my constituents, just to everyone, how important this is for our community in the long term. And not only that, if we purchase the trucks that require our feed off of natural gas, that's huge, because what that's going to do is also reduce our carbon footprint in the long term and increase our community's sustainability. And I'm just glad that we're having these town hall meetings, and I hope that this project moves forward in our community, because we all stand to benefit in the long term. Thank you.
Okay. Do we wanna have Mr. Archer, does council have any specific question, Mr. Archer?
We're gonna go ahead and talk about the cost.
Mr. Archer, why don't you come forward?
The payout.
What were we talking about?
Costs and payout.
The cost? It is gonna cost us about two and a half million dollars to buy the carts, about two and a half million dollars to buy the trucks. So, you're talking about a five-million-dollar plan. But we can see, just in the, now, revenues will be a little bit lower, 'cause we won't use as much fuel, and that fuel fee is received in revenues. But we'll see, you know, a million-two saved in expenditures each year, so it's not gonna take long to get that paid off. And it puts us in a situation where the capital outlay in the future is laid out, so we don't have to lease again. That's one of the problems that we continue to run into, is having to lease our garbage trucks. We just continue to do that. If we can, if we can go with this proposal, in the future, we'll have the money available to actually purchase those and get away from leasing them. And, and we know that we're gonna see some significant numbers in our recycling, and that's just gonna turn out, and the rebates and the savings of the landfill, as a cost savings to the city.
Yeah, we're gonna work with our good friends at River, see if we can renegotiate that recycling amount. I see Mr. Crane back there tonight, huh? Okay, I know Sidney's, go ahead. See, we hit that microphone, he found it. Are we on?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Sid.
The, the bags, the black bags, the bags that we're currently using, is this a long-term commitment, that they will continue to be able to bag their garbage and take it out to the curb like they're doing now?
It is for me. Service is very important, and that's why, you know, they've had automatic side-loaders for a long time. But until this technology was proven and we could go to it, we weren't really ready to go forward, because we wanted to make sure that those citizens that wanted to just use a bag had an option for doing that.
But this is a integral part that we, that, as the trash department, you're making the commitment that this will continue to be available with these units for individual pickups of the, of the plastic bags without using the ninety-gallon container.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would only, I would only suggest, though, one of the, one of the issues in watching some of your, your meetings, you know, neighbors sometimes start bringing those bags out, 'cause they don't wanna put them in their garage, okay? So, they start bringing them out to the street days ahead of time. And what we're gonna have to talk about is that same issue with the, leaving their cart out there on the curb. That wouldn't bother me as a neighbor as much, somebody throwing their garbage out there two and three days, the dogs in it, the coons in it. I mean, so, we got some, we got some work
We have work to do, yes, sir.
You know, I, I would strongly suggest, Sidney, that, that people, you know, the cart's gonna be given to them for their use, free of charge. I think we really need to discuss the use of just bags out there, premature to the actual pickup days, 'cause that's gonna really mess up some neighborhoods, I think. 'Cause people do that now.
Yeah, they do it now. Yes, sir.
I think that's, it's a good point, but I think we need to leave that up to the individuals to make their personal choice of what they think will work better for them.
To me, as long as we have the ability
You have to go either way.
Complaint-driven, to be able to, you know, resolve those kinda issues.
All right. Yes, sir.
I have a question, I think.
Go ahead.
And to kind of add on to what you said, the cans also increase uniformity in a neighborhood, if everyone will utilize them. It's gonna take some time. People don't like to change. But I, I agree with what you just said about that, Mayor. We need to be using them. I'd rather somebody just chuck their trash in mine than to leave it out on the corner. But I want to ask another question, follow-up. Bulky item pickup, you know, while we're working to increase and enhance our sanitation program and productivity, will there be a little bit more flexibility with that? Because sometimes there are, everybody doesn't call that hotline, you know, and schedule a pickup. And I'm not saying go all over Longview and just go pick up all the bulky items, but what I am asking is, will there be more flexibility to where, if there's something, if there's an item that's out there, and your guys are great about doing it now, but will we see more of that? You know, when somebody just decides they wanna throw something out, will y'all be able to have a little more flexibility to go ahead and get it sometimes?
Yeah, one of the things that we, we hope to do, but I'm not saying that yet, is to actually have that as a routed system that works along this, along with the same program. So, if we're in an area that's the Monday pickup area, the bulky item is actually running that area also. And so, when we come out of that Monday area, there's nothing left in there.
Okay.
You know, Cash, one thing, Dwayne, how many vehicles do we really have for bulk? Is it still just the one?
We have three.
Three?
Yes, sir.
And that's the one we call, 'cause I know, I call Laura. But that's the one, but that's the one that we use when we schedule. We, we have to schedule, call in and schedule.
It's our three. They have one for legal dump sites that they use for that, but our three are the ones that, when somebody calls.
Well, I'm just wondering, and with the three we have now, because sometimes you hear people complain that it did take too long to go get it.
Right.
And, and I'm just wondering, do we have enough of those, based on the volume y'all have right now, or are we a little short there?
That may, it's one of those things that, depending on the time of the year, you know, a, a big part of the year, we're doing fine. And then the spring comes along, and everybody cleans up everything, and then there's just a lot out there. And we get behind, but we run Wednesdays and some Saturdays trying to get that, that caught up. And it, it may be something we need to look at, 'cause we need to improve that service.
You know, if we're able to, you know, through these savings and whatnot, look at additional equipment to help there.
Yes, sir.
And I, I would hope that our, I know, I, I know a lot of those sanitation drivers, man, I, I see them and talk to them, and they, they something else. But, you know, getting them to really record where they're seeing this stuff on a repetitive basis to let y'all know, because I, again, I guess I'm like Cash, not everybody knows to call that hotline to get that bulky trash pickup. And I see Ms. Droge back there with that, "Keep Longview Beautiful," and our litter index going up a little bit. I bet if we picked up some of that bulky stuff a little quicker, you know, we'd see some of that go away, so. I mean, some things to look at.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask one more question?
Go ahead.
Dwayne, is our recycling going to be expanded to include, right now, we're only taking, like, clear bottles? Will we eventually move toward being able to accept, like, colored or brown?
Actually, we accept all plastics, one through seven, except for if it's styrofoam, we don't take it. So, all plastics, it doesn't matter what color it is, all metal cans and all paper.
Okay.
If you can tear it, we can take it. That's why they say it in Shreveport.
Yeah. And the other thing you can do, if you're not sure, throw it in the can.
Well, I
Yes. Yes.
I do anyway.
Hopefully, they'll get to where, where they'll take
There are all in there.
Where they'll take glass and, and styrofoam, because that is a
Glass is a big one, too.
A big deal. And I know, I know there's things that have to happen before you can do that, but
It, it won't be long till we have a roll-off at the new compost site for glass. We already got that scheduled. So, if somebody wants to do their glass, they'll just be able to take it out there and get rid of it.
Good.
Get it recycled.
Good deal. Garrett?
Mr. Archer? Say, for example, if this program was approved by council, and in twenty-four months, we got two guys on a truck. In twenty-four months, we got eighty-five percent of the people using the ninety-five gallon containers. It seems to me like that a second guy on the back wouldn't have much to do, maybe fifteen percent of the time, seventy percent of the time.
That, that'll be something to watch. I think it'll happen on the recycling trucks first. I think we'll see the recycling trucks where they just don't have a lot, that, that guy. But to get started, we need to make sure, you know, the customers aren't gonna be used to it. We're not gonna be the type of sanitation service that if the car's in the way, they won't get it. We're gonna go over there and get it. And so, we wanna make sure that guy's there to deal with that. But, but the time may come when, when that's not the case, and we can go ahead and even reduce further. All right.
I mean, it's important that we maintain, at minimum, the level of service we have today.
Yes.
You know, one other thing about the guys, I mean, those guys riding the back of those trucks, they take their lives in danger every day, watching them jump off of that. But the reality is, a lot of those employees are temporary service employees, too, right? So, I guess that's why you have such a high turnover in that, in that area of the business.
That's right. Everybody on the back of the truck is through a labor service.
Labor service, okay. Mr. Frost?
Follow-up, oh, here you are. You got these two ninety-five gallons sitting there, and that truck rolls up there. He probably, that guy on the back, a lot of times, gonna have to position one of them for him. Is that not right?
That, that's right. That'll certainly happen as we get started.
Yeah.
After a couple of years, people get used to it, they'll understand where to put it, and won't have that problem as much.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay. We have another, isn't there another meeting, public meeting, on the garbage, on the recycling program?
We don't have anything else scheduled.
Oh, we have one more? Nothing else scheduled? Okay, okay. But at the council meetings, as we discuss budget, will be the proper time, we probably we should do Mary Ann in the agenda, is make sure to put an item on there, a separate item, for discussion, so we give citizens the opportunity to
Right.
Come to the council meetings as well. Okay?
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Archer.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Council, the next item will be an action item. Nope, nope, nope. We gotta go back to B. We're doing B over C, C over B.
She's already up.
Where'd you get that? No, no. Anyway, I thought B came after N. Okay. So, let's get a resolution establishing a date, time, place for a public hearing for the proposed fiscal year 2013-2014 budget. Ms. Cohen?
Good evening. The state statute, along with the city charter, requires that a public hearing be held on the FY 2013-2014 proposed budget. The public hearing has been set for Thursday, August 29th, 2013. It will be held here at 5:30 in the City Hall council chambers. This proposed public hearing is for your consideration, and approval of a resolution is requested.
Okay. Questions? If not, have a motion? Have a motion, second or if ever say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion passes. And thank you, Ms. Cohen, so much for helping us with a budget issue last Thursday. You came to his rescue.
Every day.
Yeah. Action item, consider resolution appointing members to the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee. Council, this is the, the list that has been circulating for quite some time now, as part of the Comprehensive Plan. Council is to appoint a committee. Everyone has seen a list, has had input to a list, provided names to a list. As the term suggests, it is a comprehensive plan, so I think you find the membership to be very comprehensive.[1713.71] to be very comprehensive. And let me also say that, in addition to this list of people, it's, it's gonna be recommended, as I understand, from, you know, what is it, Freezing Nichols, that you'll have breakout groups to, on different issues, whether it's parks, transportation, et cetera. So, there will be an opportunity for subcommittees for even more people to be, to be involved with this whole process, which we encourage that that happen. But also, I want to thank former Mayor Earl Roberts, who's agreed to chair. Councilman Manley's agreed to be the council liaison. Obviously, these meetings, I would think and recommend that they're posted, so that council is invited to sit in, listen in, to, to how this process is gonna, gonna work. My understanding is, we're probably talking 18 months or so to, to really get this in place. And it, it's important that, you know, if we don't have, if you don't have a way to steer the ship, you can't expect the ship to stay the course. And the, the objective here, which is the reason council recommended this, is to really get a good plan for the community. A lot of us aren't gonna be here in 20 years, okay? But it's important, while we know you are, but it's important that we try to put a plan in place that future councils and future citizens can, can look at, update, upgrade, but try to follow. It's, it's, the intent is to make Longview a better place for all the residents of Longview. So, at that, I'd like to ask if there's any questions, and if not, to ask for a motion for approval.
No move.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second or if ever say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Items of community interest.
Mayor, before I say anything, I would like to ask you, why you were looking directly at me when you said most of us won't be here in 20 years? I take that as a front.
Well, Mr. Sims, if, if I was looking at you, I was a little cross-eyed, because I didn't think I was, okay? I was talking about me as much as anybody, I promise. That being said, what else you got?
On my way to the meeting today, I was thinking about the sanitation department, and over the seven and a half years I've served, I have always gotten very, very good reports about sanitation, and of course, I know it all to be true. Now, the council is not the ones that is suggesting we change our method of picking up. Dwayne and his crew came to us proposing, so let's keep the faith. If it's been so good for the last seven years, then he's got to, to show us, and he will, that it's gonna be even better from now on.
Good point, good point, Ms. Sims. Mr. Garrett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
First of all, I want to speak to that gentleman that came up to the podium a few minutes ago about his computer skills. The Green Street Center on Green Street has computer classes registering now. It's only $10 per month, I mean, two, per year, let me get this straight, $10 a year, and you can go all year for $10, that's pretty cheap.
Oh, yeah.
The Green Street, Cod Street construction should be complete by mid-August. I may be stepping out too far on that, Mr. Mayor.
You gotta talk to Mr. Bonds.
By mid-August.
He's shaking that head, you better go check those facts.
Oh, okay. I want to say congratulations to Keep Longview Beautiful for winning the Governor's of the War for this year, and the fireworks show and the balloon race was great. Our staff did a great job in getting that together.
Sure did.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, pro temp. Okay.
First, I just want to thank the entire community, the president is here of the Longview branch of the NAACP for seeing, it was great to see everybody at the banquet on Saturday night, and our, our, our president, Brandon Johnson, did a fabulous job hosting, and we just appreciate the support I do as a member of the organization for everybody in our community. Second thing, the Longview Community Services Department's volunteer office, with support from the Longview Sanitation Department and the Longview Police Department, is planning a cleanup on August the 23rd. I'm not gonna give you the date for the other one yet, but the first one is located in my district, and on August the 23rd, an estimated 200 students will be cleaning up the area around the campus, including the neighborhoods and parks, Benny Jackson, Willow, and Broughton. I am broadcasting this message to encourage constituents of District 3 and the entire community to please come out and support this effort. Another event will follow, I believe, in September, but the first one is August the 23rd. And as we're talking about cleaning up our community and the great work our sanitation department does, I think that as a community, we should support any cleanup efforts that take place. So thank you to La Terna University, the Longview Sanitation, and police departments, and I look forward to seeing everybody there.
Okay. Mr. Frost?
Yes, we, we had a ribbon cutting at the natural gas fueling station last week, and that was a very interesting situation, and using local natural gas, the pipe runs from a little plant, not too far away, goes right into it, and it, when talking to the people, Independence, I believe is what it was, they talk about the trucks coming off of I-20 now, they've made some deals with some freight trucks, they come from Alabama, they're usually stopping Boulder City, now they come in and making a contract with him to fill up in Longview, because that sets up their schedule, they go across the country to find stations. So it's really an asset that we have now in Longview, and there's some more coming, I think.
And it's a dollar seventy-four a gallon.
Dollar seventy-four a gallon. They had some pickups out there that had been converted, and, and they didn't have any pure natural gas in them, but I found out, and what was interesting was, I want to know how they started them, and they, they say you got a gasoline, you got two fuel systems, a gasoline and a natural gas. They started on gasoline, and it automatically switches over to natural gas.
New deal. Mr. Richard?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Sidney? Mr. Sidney Allen?
Thank you.
You're speechless.
Speechless.
All right, okay. Okay, Longview Fire Department hosts its annual Heroes of Tomorrow Saturday, August 3rd, from 8 o'clock to 1 PM at the Fire Department Training Center, 411 American Legion Boulevard. To register, call 903-237-1019, and this is a free event. On Thursday, July 25th, 2013, Tryon at Hollybrook closed the traffic. The intersection of Tryon-Hollybrook is being rebuilt, it will be closed approximately a month. This work is in conjunction with the Hollybrook improvements between Eastman Road and Loop 281. If you have questions related to construction, please call the city's project manager, Alton Bradley, at 903-237-1067. And applications are now being accepted for the 22nd Annual Citizens Police Academy, beginning Thursday, September 12th, concluding on Thursday, October 24th. Classes will meet on Tuesday and Thursday nights from 6:30 PM until 8:30 PM, each night at the Longview Police Department's Roy Stone Training Center, 302 West Cotton. For more information, contact Teresa Raw at 903-237-1199. Council, that's all we have, please take the time, and let's, let's look over, Mr. Will appreciate the, the, the hard work on the budget, but now our job begins. It's time for us to look at this and, and make sure needs versus wants, and, and make sure to have us a good conservative budget again this year, okay? Council meeting is adjourned.